I'll call this meeting of the Ortonville Planning Commission regular meeting, March 2nd, 2021. Call to order. Okay. Hmm. And then, I guess, we need a pledge of allegiance from someone. Lee, would you like to do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody got a hand on their heart?
Yes, sir.
On there. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, Jenna, can you do a roll call for people present?
Yes, I think we just have someone joining right now.
Okay. I promise.
Will.
Hopefully, he's joined by the time we get to his name.
Right.
Hayden.
Here.
MacArthur.
Here.
Nyval.
Here.
Palshan.
Here.
McAvinci.
Present.
Conway.
Not yet. Doesn't look like it. But somebody is. We don't know who.
Hey, it's a public meeting. Might be public, too.
Could be anybody. All right, so, I was looking at the, this is Commissioner McAvinci. I was looking at the, document about, about, village council, rules of procedure, and on one of the last pages, it talks about holding meetings electronically. And what it says in here is, "Members of the public body who participate remotely must announce at the onset of the meeting that he or she is in fact attending the meeting remotely and be further identifying, and by further identifying the specific physical locations by country, township, village, and state where he or she is located." And the meeting minutes must include this information. I don't know that village council has been doing that, but it does say that is a requirement for electronically held meetings. So, this, Commissioner McAvinci, I'm in Ortonville, Michigan, United States. Anybody else not in Ortonville, Michigan? Or everybody just, anyway, that's what it says here. I was reading this, and maybe we've been missing this for a while.
If that was from our council packet, we haven't approved those yet, and that was, that piece was not in the previous rules of procedure, so maybe we haven't approved that yet. That might be why we haven't done it yet.
Maybe. Doesn't say it's not approved, but, okay. All right. So, we need to, we have our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's MacArthur. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, Commissioner Palshan, second to the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on our agenda items?
Trustee Hayden, I have a couple of agenda items I think we need to add. One is I realized that we have, not so far this year, from what I can find, done our annual election of officers for the planning commission. And I checked back, and according to our bylaws that were approved and became effective September 5th, 2019, we are supposed to do that in our first meeting of the calendar year. And in any event, supposed to be within 60 days. So I think that we probably need to add election of officers under new business.
Are you doing that an E? Is that one?
I think we only have an A, B, and C under new business so far, although I was going to propose a D also, but.
I have a D.
Well, I have a D also, so maybe, let me get my two in, and, because I think that one needs to be in there for sure, because we have that in our bylaws that we're supposed to elect officers. And I also would like to add, and that could be D, and then the next item, I guess, would be E. And I would propose adding a new business item for zoning ordinance update.
We have that on there.
It's already in the agenda.
That's number D, is what I was trying to tell you.
I did not see that in my packet.
You have an old agenda, I think.
One was the new agenda distributed.
Oh.
I'll have to look it up.
Okay, well, if we already have that as item D, then, then I'm, then that's good. I did not see that in the packet that I got, so.
So, you want us to add election of officers tonight?
Yes. By our bylaws, we were supposed to have done that in the January meeting, and it also states that we're supposed to do that. And even if we postpone it, we are supposed to do it within 60 days of that first meeting, so.
All right, so.
We need to do that.
So we add that as item E, under new business. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, so can we have a vote on approving the agenda as amended for tonight's meeting?
MacArthur?
Yes. Yep.
Nyval?
Yes.
Palshan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes. So it passed unanimously. Okay. And then our minutes from the last, the last meeting, which was February 2nd. Does anybody have any, any, well, I'll tell you one thing that I noticed. Discussion about adding the section D to the park regulations, says with the exception of Commissioner Hayden, it was a consensus of the planning commission to add D. Is that, that is the part about a minimum distance from anybody's park boundary, or property boundaries, is it? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to point out that I also was not in favor of that, so, although I voted for the whole thing, but I wasn't in favor of that part. So, that's all I want to change. Anything, anyone else has about the last month's minutes?
So you want to change the minutes of the meeting?
Well, are we supposed to approve the minutes or not? You'd approve them with changes?
Yeah, it would be, approve them as amended.
As amended.
Right, but, I mean, you can't change how you voted, or if you didn't do something that you should have done.
On that item, it wasn't a vote. Each item was discussed and consensus was reached for each item. And in this case, it states with the exception of Commissioner Hayden, and I think Rick just wants to make that with the exception of Commissioners Hayden and McAvinci.
That was my intent, and.
And I think that's appropriate.
Because we both didn't agree with that idea, so, but we, I mean, we both voted to, for the whole ordinance change, anyway, but.
Yeah, we voted for the finalized draft to go to council, but we didn't necessarily agree, all of us on every single topic in there.
Correct.
But that's okay. We came to consensus on each item, where the majority wanted this, that, or the other, and that's what went on.
Okay, so that's the only thing I wanted to put in. Anybody else have any changes for the minutes from our last meeting? Apparently not. Okay. So, we need a motion to adopt or approve the last month's minutes with.
Who made, who made the original motion?
Did we have a motion?
We did, because we had the motion before we started discussion.
I don't think we had a motion yet. We just started discussing it. Do we have a motion for?
Why make a motion that we approve the minutes with the corrections?
Trustee Hayden, support?
All right, Jenna, any other?
I should say Commissioner Hayden, sorry.
Yeah, both.
Too many council meetings.
Any other discussion? Okay, Jenna, can we have a roll call vote?
Nyval?
Yes.
Palshan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes. All right, so down to public comments. Do we have any public on board that have something they want to add, or question, or? Anybody? Don't see anyone. Okay.
I'm not sure. Tanya, are you here in your role as village interim village manager, or as public? Okay.
Village manager. All right, welcome temporary interim manager. Glad to see you. Okay. So, there's another thing I noticed in the about the planning commission. We've been, we've been using, in the village, rules of procedure, which may or may not be approved yet. One thing it says in here is that the planning commission operates in compliance with general law of village officials. Chapter 9, Planning and Zoning, Section 2, Roles and Responsibility. And whereas it talks in here about the village council using the latest version of Robert's Rules and Order, Rules of Order. It doesn't really say that for the planning commission, and it just says using the handbook for general law of village officials. So the question came up, to me, anyway, that are we using Robert's Rules of Order, or are we just using the general, the handbook for general law of village officials? Village manager, do you know that?
Well, the handbook for village officials does reference Robert's Rules as the base. That's a starting point. It is not firm. It's, you know, you work from that point on. We are very casual compared to Robert's Rules, as you know. So that's the base in which we're formed on, and then we go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairperson, if I could offer a view on that. The rules of procedure pertain primarily to council. That's council's rules of procedure, under which the council operates. I believe that planning commission would be operating under the bylaws that were adopted. So we probably would need to look into our bylaws to see what it states, and how we run meetings and things like that.
We could. And we should. Okay. All right, thank you for considering this.
Yeah, we do have a whole section about meetings in our bylaws that we approved.
Yes. All right.
But the general village law is also addressed on page 37 of, or the planning and zoning is addressed on 37 of the general village law as well. So it does pertain to both.
37, thank you. So, do we have any items from commissioners? And, let's see, I'm going to go around the the screen I'm looking at as presented. So Commissioner Nyval, do you have anything to bring up?
Yes. So, did everyone get the brand presentation, the latest logo with the tab line? It was sent out separate. Yeah, that. Did, okay. And that's basically for information. Those are the two finalists right now, as far as the, well, both the logo and the taglines, that will be presented to village council next week for their, basically for selection and approval. But I wanted to just make sure all of you saw what the two finalists were down to, because you saw the five-page one a month ago, so. So that was just for your information, so you have it. And then I will let you know what council selects, or they don't select, or stay the same. I will keep you posted. And then, Rick, I had sent you just some notes from the meeting. Did you want me to go over those, or do you want to go over those?
All right, I copied those into a, I copied from your email into a Word file and sent it to everyone, so each person.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Have that.
Okay. I did not get that, but if everyone got that, I don't have to go over them then, right?
Well, you probably did. I sent it to everybody. But, anyway, so, in fact, I attached it to my response to Patty when she said that she was, may not be here tonight.
Okay, okay, but, so then if everyone has them, I do not have to go through them, correct?
Okay.
I mean, I'm asking.
I would say, if anyone has any questions about it, they can ask you. Otherwise, yeah, we could just
Okay.
keep it as a document to look over.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, how about?
Melanie?
Yes. Yes.
Did you get the one, the required components checklist? It's a single sheet, page one of two.
What are you talking about?
For.
For stewardship plan, required components checklist.
Um, I got what was in my packet. I did not get that thing, though. I'll tell you that, what, if Rick copied it and sent it, I didn't get that.
Okay, just so you're aware, there's that checklist that is helpful. I know you and I talked about, you know, requirements and recommendations, and what's, what can be included and not included.
What are we talking about now? I'm confused. All I was talking about was my updates of what happened.
How about if I hold it up? Will that help?
Um, put it in there.
Maybe I was too close?
I don't know.
Stop moving, one sec, let's see.
We can talk about that. It's nothing I need right this minute, right?
No, but I'm just saying, you said you didn't know if you had all the documents.
I don't think I have that one.
So if you, you don't, you know, we can get the, or, yeah, you sent them, right, Rick?
Thank you.
And I think Jenna sent them a second time, or the first time.
I sent them to Jenna, and she sent them out to each of you, so. I got all of them from her, back, so, okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Palshan, you have anything to add at this point? Items? Lee Palshan?
No.
Okay, Lee?
Yes.
You have anything you want to, items you want to bring up?
No, I, there's nothing I'd like to bring up at this time.
Okay. How about Commissioner MacArthur?
Yes. I just want to, excuse me, make a comment on the the park ordinance. And I want to make it clear that I have no issue with changing what the changes that were made with the ordinance. But I do have an issue or a problem. Probably several times through that conversation, that there was, on our part, a failure to research the different issues on it. And that's fine, and that's very possible, that it would be taken that way, but that comment was made between two or three of the council members, several times through the whole thing, that that we had a failure to research, and, and I'll remember that one. And, and it's very likely possible we didn't, but I don't believe it was necessary for multiple, multiple times to be repeated. And, and they made reference once to the, our ordinance as resembling the chicken ordinance of, of that issue, which is unfortunate. And, and everybody should remember, as you, everybody, you two, Rick and Larry commented at the beginning, that you voted yes for it, but you questioned the, that distance. And I get that, that's definitely what you should be doing. But you want to remember that when a council member questions something that we do, and, but yet approves it, but when they go to council, they can change that, which they did, and they have the right. I get it. But I don't like it. That's my opinion with it, but that's all I have to say on it. No big deal. I'm over it. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. So, Commissioner Hayden?
Uh, yes, I'm going to start out first by saying, thank you, Melanie, for all the hard work on Wayfinding Committee. I appreciate that. That's much appreciated. I, Melanie, and I had a nice tour of the village park property. Let's hope that we can get that renamed after Ron Sutton's honor. I think that would be great. But that was a very nice tour of the park, and it was well worth it to go out there, even though it was cold and kind of work trudging through the snow there, but it was good. And in regards to your comments, or Bob, I apologize if, if, you know, it was not meant to slight anything or anybody in that case, but, you know, it was, it was just the one point there where, even when we had our discussion here in planning commission, there was no basis given for the distance chosen for that one particular item. Most of the items, I thought, were quite well, were very good, but it was just that one item in particular that I expressed my views here, and I again expressed them at the council, and, you know, I did not mean to slight anybody in that respect, because I know you guys did a lot of hard work on that, so I apologize if it was, came out the wrong way on that.
Okay. So, well, let's see. So Commissioner Conway, I guess you're on by phone, are you?
I'm here.
All right. Have anything you want to bring up?
No, sir, just taking it all in.
Okay. Well, thanks. I'm glad you made it.
Yeah, barely.
So, and under new business, we've been, we've been authorized to look into the possibility of developing trails in our wildland park, primarily the, the larger park, by the village council president, and, and so I think we need to discuss what steps we need to take to at least explore that possibility. And, and I, I think that we, we probably have need to follow a process. And the first part of the process, I would think, to, would be to look and see what citizen input we have so far. People have been interested in it. I know that that has been a primary interest of, of the people that responded to us in our master plan, both master plan planning processes, and, and the parks and recreation master plan with the, with the township. Those were interesting trails, especially was highest on the list each time, as far as what to do with our part, so I think that's the first thing to recognize. As far as the process after that, whether we need to, well, I'm just going to open it up for ideas of how you think we best ought to proceed here. MacArthur?
I just want to, real quick, I know my name was brought up at the council meeting, and I want you to know, I had, I have no intention of that. I don't want to be chairman of anything with that. I love working on it, but Pat may have gotten a little exuberant about, about my involvement with that. That letter I sent was sent way back with the other council, and it was just out of frustration of nothing being done that we felt was, or I personally felt was appropriate, so please don't think that, that I'm all that, I am not interested in chairing that, and I don't know where Pat come up with that. Just so we know.
Okay. Any other ideas on the process we should follow?
Well, this is Commissioner Hayden. While I did agree with Pat that I think it would be a good idea to form some kind of a committee to study the trails topic, I thought that that should be led by planning commission, which is why I voted against his motion, and that's why I think it would be appropriate for us to maybe consider forming a committee and then ask for a council member to participate in the committee. My thinking would be maybe two commissioners, the village manager, and a trustee from the village as a start. But I'm just throwing that out there for, for thought, and like to hear what other people think.
Commissioner Nyval? I would like for all of us to, before we break everyone apart and have the different committees, I would love to hear what everybody has to say, and be able to actually get in a room with some maps, like at the town hall if possible, and have some of the maps of the different areas, and, and are we specifically just looking at the preservation park? Or whatever we want to call that right now. For trails right now, is that what we're zoning into? Because I know there's some other areas that, you know, have been discussed and talked about and researched, but are we looking at all areas? Or specifically that?
I think we're start, I think we're starting with that, and, but we also talked about Naren Park. It does have a trail that goes along the river. We probably ought to go over there and take a look at that sometime and see what changes we might think that could use, that area could use, but.
Yeah. I know Bob and I have talked about that area. But I would love to start out by hearing what everyone has to say, and then getting the information from that town hall to all of us, because I don't. Cause I don't think, well, I know Will probably doesn't have that. And I have copies of the old stuff, I think it's the right stuff, but if we don't have it with the, the survey that we did and the town hall information, we have all of that we could look through as well from what the public, you know, the public's opinion that they gave us.
Yep.
And of course, our master plan, of course, but I think, are we just looking for informational items right now? Is that the focus?
Well, I'm asking for input on the process that we will follow. And one question is whether we should have either another survey on, specifically on this park or, or have another open house or something like that to gather new information? Or can we rely on what we've already gathered in three master plan processes over the years? I don't know.
Would, would your thought be to maybe, after we had looked at maps and came up with some suggested trail paths, to have something at that point for the public to see what they thought at that point, or would you like to have something before? I'm just asking what, what you're thinking.
Well, I'm asking for you, all of your inputs. So as far as how the process should go.
Okay.
If you come up with ideas, tell us what the ideas are. I'm not driving this myself.
Trustee Hayden, the, what Melanie's mentioned has brought up a couple of ideas in my mind, which I'll share real quick and then I would like to hear from everyone else as well. I know in the past we've done things where we have had joint meetings where like the DDA would host one with the entities and the Planning Commission would host one and the village would host one. This might be a nice topic to share at one of those joint meetings where we could focus on walkability plan in the village and how trails would fit into that and how our parks and trails through the parks might fit into that, so that could be, that's just one thought I have is maybe we could do that as part of a joint meeting. And from there maybe come up with a concept to hold a public meeting once we have some concepts that we knock out together. That's just some thoughts popped in my head and I'd like to hear from Lee and Will yet and anybody else who has thoughts.
So Lee, do you have anything you wanna add? To the process of doing this?
Will's got his hand up, does that?
Oh, Will has his hand up?
Yeah.
He's muted, it looks like.
I know, but there's a hand, I swear. Does anyone else see the hand?
Is that your cursor that's on his spot there, Melanie?
He's waiting to speak next, that's what the hand up.
Oh, okay.
All right, Will, go for it.
That was an unintentional hand up, sorry, trying to drive.
Oh, you're driving, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
You know, I, I guess I would like to, Larry's first comment was, was sounded like that a, a process that we needed to do, get some, some people assigned as, as a committee, but then, but it sounded like it got expanded into joint meetings and and, and I'm not sure if that was two different things. Developing the, the trails in the park could be at one, but then mixing that into the, the whole DDA and, and joint meetings, was you talking about using them for the design of the interior of the park? Or just in general with the walkability of the, of the village and, and that general discussion of it, I, I'm not sure what you meant.
So I, I assume you're addressing that to me, Bob?
Yes, yeah, please, I'm sorry.
I, I just was throwing some ideas, I think that we need some people to study it and my thoughts were first that we could start by trying to form a committee, but then with the discussion about involving more people and getting public and doing surveys, I thought about it might be a topic for a joint meeting too, and we could potentially do both, you know, we could start with committee, start putting together some plans on our part and then bring that to a joint meeting later to share that with those other entities and discuss how, how, what we come up with might fit in with general walkability and other things that are going on in the village. And, you know, springboard from that into setting up a public meeting to go over the combined results from those discussions or something like that. So, you know, like I said, this is just, I'm just throwing this out for thought, I, it doesn't have to be that way, but I'm just throwing that out for thought and, and, you know, that's it. Does that help you, has that helped you out, Bob?
Yes, it does, and I agree with that, I, I think that getting a, a committee together, designing something, because we all know it's just, that can be changed, it's just a design. And then once something has come up with, you can, we can then take it to those other steps and, and we know there'll be questions and concerns of one thing or another. But I think there needs to be a base made that everybody can work with.
Commissioner Nivell? Before we break up though and, and do the smaller committee thing, I would really like for all of us to be able to meet the Planning Commission in person with maps and surveys and whatever information that we have currently, that, that we can decide for, for focus, I, I should say, on where we want to begin researching and begin a trail.
And I think that's a very good idea, actually.
May I intervene for a second? Of two points of clarification, that is not within the DDA district. So I know Larry mentioned kind of two things, walkability, that would be different. The park itself is not in the DDA district and would not include them, they couldn't get any grants or fundings for that location. And, and the second thing, unfortunately, you cannot have a public meeting at this time. You have, that would be too many people, cause it has to be a public meeting, so you can't meet in person, I'm sorry, in-person public meeting is not allowed, we've, we've passed the numbers, cause it would have to be open to the public, so you could.
Which, meeting, like if we had a workshop?
Right, we can't do it in person, you could do it in groups and separate, or you could do it on a Zoom and have the access, but you can't meet in public in a building, because it has to be open, I'm sorry, in person in a building, because it has to be open to the public.
Isn't, isn't it 25? There, I, I, I remember seeing something, if, if we have up to 25 people?
We can't put a limit on it and you would have to allow anybody and everybody in, so you would have to stop your meeting if more than that amount came in, you can't stop it. We don't have the technology to air it elsewhere. Cannot do that at this point, that's why, you know, a lot of the entities are having public meetings.
Okay, well, then I guess if we did a Zoom meeting and we can, but I'd like to do it with all the maps that were, so we're looking at all the maps and the survey information. And I, I would prefer to do that as a planning commission together first, where we decide what areas we really wanna focus on and then break up your committees. So they know what to do. And that's just my thought. But I'd like to hear from everybody, I have no idea what Patty or, you know, Lee, I, I'm not sure what their thoughts or ideas are. And I would just be interested to, to see what they have, if they have maps done or ideas on trails. So we do have to do everything sharing, then Jenna would have to share all the maps and on screen, so we could go through everything, basically, that's our only option right now.
You can have copies of them on you as well, and it would be, you know, posted to the public on DoD. So everybody could follow along on their own map in front of them.
Yeah. No, hate Zoom.
So you say, time, this is Commissioner McAvoy, you said we can't meet indoors. Can we meet outdoors in Crosman Park at the pavilion if we want to?
As long as everything's DDA compliant, which it's not.
What's that, DDA compliant?
A D, ADD compliant, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say DDA, ADD compliant.
You mean ADA, I think ADD is a attention deficit disorder.
You have to meet the needs of, of any requests, which would be, you know, the audio, visual, anybody to have access to, to have transportation to. It was not recommended by our attorney when they tried that once.
Okay. And so could we as a group take a walk together as a group? With maps?
Not with more than three people, it's a quorum.
Okay, so we have to meet in threes and threes and threes in order to have something physical in front of us.
Or you could have it as a public workshop walk, where everybody can go and the public is invited.
Okay, but doesn't that have to be compliant for ADA, for, for the real?
Now, the space is, it's a workshop, not a meeting. And therefore the space is not ADA compliant.
Okay.
But to host a public meeting, we have to as the government entity.
So it could be a workshop walk?
Sure.
Where we would have our maps and we could be out walking? Huh, okay.
This is Commissioner Hayden, I'm, I think that we have seen that they are starting to relax some of the restrictions recently. And who knows, perhaps by April, maybe things will be more relaxed and we might find ourselves in a position where it's possible to have an indoor meeting with sufficient capacity to include public, so I would suggest maybe we postpone setting up a committee or something for now and, and see if the situation is, is more conducive to something like Melanie suggesting by the April timeframe. Any objection to that?
If I can ask a question, we've had, as Melanie and Rick have both mentioned, multiple citizen inputs, multiple amounts of support. The question, or is the question more where, when and how, not necessarily if there's a trail? If, if we already know that the citizens in general have support, do they need to be involved at the initial stage of a committee, or would that be something you would involve them in when you have some type of vision of what that space might look like? I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm thinking once we have a vision, but that's just my opinion.
That was kind of what I was implying when I suggested we start out with an internal committee and then bring it to, once we have something, we bring it to other involved entities and, and then from there, take it to the public. I guess the question is, do we want to initiate something with committee at this meeting or, or wait at this point?
So this is Commissioner McAvoy, I, I, I think it's unfortunate that the restrictions we have for meeting at this point, it seems that we can't involve the entire Plan Commission, as I would prefer to, on this, the same way we've involved in Plan Commission on master plan development and changes and all that, we didn't do committees on that, we just did the whole thing with the entire commission. And it seems like legally we're not allowed to do that right now. To meet and work together on, on this, unless we just worked on it each meeting as part of each meeting that we have.
We could take that approach too.
Yeah.
Could host a workshop as well, it would just have to be, follow the public guidelines of the OMA. You can have, hold a separate workshop.
We could do that in the town hall, the old town hall.
No, she means on Zoom, like to do a workshop on Zoom, actually, I know I hate Zoom.
Whether it's a workshop or a meeting, if it's under Open Meetings Act, it has to comply to the Open Meetings Act requirements.
Correct, I'm aware of that, but, so, so that means that we can't have a meeting at this point in the old town hall.
You can have three of you get together in the old town hall, or the Girl Scouts could get together in a group of 10, but for an Open Meetings Act, no. You are over that number, because you cannot turn away any member of the public. You have to allow enough public in there, and that's past our numbers.
Okay.
I'm just curious on that, because when, when there, even in the past, we've had meetings where there were more members of public wanted to attend council meetings than the fire code capacity would allow. So, you know, I, I, I think that there's gotta be some reasonable point where we can say enough members of public can attend that we can hold a meeting, so I think that would be something we'll have to figure out.
Well, right now it's still at 10, and with the group of you, you've reached a limit, we cannot have public meetings. The attorney has reversed on what we can and cannot do.
Okay.
Public meeting.
Well, Commissioner Nivell, how about then, right, what, what if we are all sent the survey results that we received when we were doing the master plan, I think that's from 2018, oh. What if we are all sent that and we can look through it for, for input on the trails and everything? You know, all the comments, all the comment sections? And then next week, next meeting, we could go through that or have a workshop? And maybe by then, since it would be April, like Larry's saying, maybe it will have changed where we could meet in person, but at least we're doing something in the meantime?
And can we then set aside a portion of, of our coming meetings, as many as we need to, to work as a group on this, what we wanna come up with, what we can come up with as recommendations for a trail system?
Yeah, that looks like the only way we'll be able to approach it, to do it together until we're ready to, you know, separate into committees.
I would think so. Well, the, the other option would be to form a committee of three people and then they can meet as much as they want, without violating open meeting law. That's another lesser option, but it is certainly an option.
I think at this point, it probably, we can, I, I think I would agree with starting out where we just set aside some time each meeting to work on this topic and move it forward. If we find we're not moving forward fast enough, we can form a committee to try to move things along faster. But maybe for now, just set aside that time and start out as was suggested with the past public input and the, and start with that.
So Lee and Bob and Will, any thoughts on that idea, either of those two ideas?
Sounds fine to me, Commissioner MacArthur, right, fine with me.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me as well.
Okay, so so it sounds like we can, rather than go to a committee at this point, we can put, set aside a certain amount of time for our coming meetings to work on this trails proposal, trails project. And that way we can satisfy the requirements and get some things done. All right. Anything, Lee, that you wanna add? Yes, please. Lee, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Tanya, at one time, didn't we have a aerial photograph of that park that had some sort of scale to it in the village offices? Do you know?
I'm not sure if we have an aerial, we have multiple topographical, is that how you say it, Rick?
Topographical.
Topography is what I said in my head.
Or topo.
I'm also a Miss Topography, so, um, maps, but I'm not sure about an aerial, I would have to double check, I don't specifically have one, doesn't mean there isn't one.
Okay.
Not sure, there might have been one in the master plan.
I guess, yeah, I mean.
Have you seen?
I know they can be, you can get them from Oakland County. I just don't know what the expense is, they'll print out a, a color one that's to scale, the actual property lines.
Right, and we have access to that through the village, but I can check and see. Rick, have you seen one at all that you know of?
Yes.
Okay, then there is.
I, I have mine from my big one. I just had it today. From the, I think 2006, when we were first proposing some trails through there. And that was printed out for us by the Oakland County Planning and Economic Development Office. And I, you all have that I sent you, sort of a eight and a half by eleven version of that, that does show all the property boundaries. And and I can make that, I added that trail to that one that I sent out to you. The trail that Melanie and Pat and I sort of scoped out along the west side. But I can give it without that trail on there, just the, the aerial photo, satellite photo that shows the park and it shows all the properties around it. I can send that out to you again so that we are starting from just what's there on the ground now without that added proposed trail on there. Or you already have that, I sent it to everyone a couple of months ago, I guess. So look in your, your emails and see where that might be, but Melanie brought hers out with her last a week ago Saturday, so she had. So, and I've got, I made several other copies for her, but you should have that already through email someplace. And yes, whatever the name, the current name of Oakland County Planning and Economic Development Offices, they will make us any maps that we need, I already topped them right at the beginning of our shutdown, March 10th, I was at a at a workshop and talked with some of the guys in that office, and they, they're just waiting for us to ask. And they'll, I don't even think they charge for them.
Well, and we have access to the Oakland GIS system as well, so we can definitely do that if we don't, but if you have it, we have to have it somewhere.
Yes, you do.
I recall, you know, I don't know how many years back seeing that map we had. And it seemed to me at one time, it was on one of the ESOS in the conference room.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen it in a while.
I know which one you're talking about now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so you do have that available and we can get more up-to-date ones if we want, if we need them. So.
And if there's some maps that, like I'm looking through the ones right now in the master plan, some of these could be pretty, pretty helpful, I'm just trying to see if there's any that have the actual like the footage, you know, the, in the I don't think so, but if, if there's maps that maybe we could ask the office about or inquire to see if we have them and Adam sent? Would that be okay?
Melanie.
Yes.
Go ahead, Lee.
Can you hear me?
Uh, it looks like Melanie just landed on the moon. She's like real choppy.
Oh, yeah.
On the video.
Can you guys hear me at all?
I, I can hear you and see if, okay, so.
Yeah.
This is so weird, there's something going on with the internet, guys.
That's okay.
All right, yeah, so if we can, there's a couple of maps that, I don't know, can we, from the master plan, can we copy? Or download just specifically the maps, or is it a PDF where we can't download anything?
Even if that, you still can. When it's a PDF, you still could, yeah, certain pages.
Okay.
I just, I was just talking with Jenna, that we make sure that the current map that is on file is the map, the one that we're utilizing, as long as there's no changes from the one that you might have, to make sure that there's no changes first, obviously, we want to make sure we use the most current one. So that's what, try to make sure tomorrow and make sure it matches the one that we have on file and then pass it out if it's not.
So that means that whatever map we use that shows all the property boundaries and it would be an aerial photo or a satellite photo to show all the trees and everything else should come from our office, then.
As long as it's the same, in general, it's every six months, so it should be updated, if you're talking 2006, there should be some good updates. So let's find out and see how similar it is.
Why don't you and Jenna look, find out the latest version of the map and send it to each of us?
Yep, we will do that tomorrow.
I say map, but I'm really meaning aerial photo, satellite photo.
Yes, with the master plan in 2018, that was the most current. Now, what's changed since then, we don't know, if anything.
Okay.
In that piece of property, not much should have changed, so.
But we also have to look at Naren though, as well, you know, if we're gonna, I'm assuming we're looking at both areas, correct?
Well, I believe that would be the right way to do it.
Cool, all right, well then the map and the survey will be great to have.
So in that case, we need a, the same kind of satellite photo with property boundaries on it for Naren Park as well. Okay, so we're talking about maps, we got that down, and we're talking about survey results and open house results to get some input from the people that actually, the residents that actually gave us their input in response to our requests during our master planning processes. One thing with trails is it would be useful to map the trails that are in the park at this time, I would think, both parks. And so we have some idea, a good idea of where they lay right now and how they lay in relation to properties and such. We could do that. I mean, I do that all the time with properties when I do forest management plans, and so we could, with a helper, we could go out and map the trails that exist. Yes, Commissioner Hayden?
Okay. I, 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 while I agree with you on that, I would just want to mention that we're already almost an hour or over an hour into our meeting, we're still on the first topic. And I believe that what you just mentioned may be something we could continue discussing under Forest Stewardship Plan, because I think that would be something that would be included in something like that. But in the interest of trying to move forward, I would, I would ask if there's any more input on this topic, and if not, maybe we can try to move on, if that's okay?
That's okay, all right, so. Is everybody okay with what we discussed so far, and if so, we'll move on to the next topic, and this is very brief. I put this in there about planning commission annual plan, because it seems like in the planning commission, we are always just reacting to things and adding tasks to do in response to oh, sometimes citizens, but most of the time in response to the village council. And I just wanted to see if there are items that we could plan into, plan for certain months, for instance, throughout each year. And the reason I bring that up is because Boy Scouts, when I was scout master for a long time, they, their process is to have a, a planning meeting with the adult leaders and the boy leaders in August each year and plan the whole year out. Roughly sketch out what they're going to do throughout the year. And if there's any items, any recurring items that we know that we're going to work on, it might be useful to insert those into the calendar, knowing that we're going to work on them. For instance, when we were doing the master plan, we could have maybe we did, but certain meetings that, yes, we're going to work on master plan, in this case, for now, we're talking about the same thing with trails project. And so I just wanted to briefly ask if anybody has ideas of items that we would normally work on each year. Now, the CIP is one, comes up quite often, and we do work on that somewhat. And that's all I wanted to ask about that, if we do have enough to make insert them into the calendar throughout the year that we know we're going to be working on, we could do that, otherwise, we're just waiting to hear what we're requested to do from council and, and sometimes from citizens. Okay, that's all I want to say about that.
Ruth, if, if we have any suggestions, do you want us to email them to you then?
That'd be good.
Okay. Thank you.
So if you do, email to me and we can, I'll put together some kind of a rough calendar if we have any items that we know we're going to be working on throughout the year, we can try it for this calendar year and see, see what we come up with. Okay, any other?
You're, you already mentioned CIP, Rick, and another one, which we actually have that as a topic this, this meeting, and it will continue to be so once we get rolling in that process, is the zoning ordinance update. So that's going to be a second one, that would be a regular, or a third one if we count the trails, there's three topics already.
And I would point out that we can't really do the zoning ordinance update until after we revise the master plan, if we're going to revise the master plan, that's, we need direction from council about that, but because the zoning ordinance needs to be tied directly to the master plan. And we can't very well do that until we, we finish the master plan, any revisions we're going to make.
If I could just offer view on that real quick, I don't think that's necessarily true, because I believe that we were primarily looking at the portion of the master plan about trails that was taken out. I don't think trails per se is going to have a significant impact on the master plan and how it relates to zoning. So I think that we could still move along in both those in parallel, the one for the master plan about trails and the other one about zoning ordinances could still go in in parallel with that, in my opinion.
You very well may be correct. Okay, so that's all I wanted to bring up about that, anybody has any thoughts, send them to me or speak right now, or we'll move on to the next item. Okay, so speaking of master plan revision, the reason for revision is because as a result of that previous ordinance prohibiting trails in our village park, anything related to that was taken out of the master plan, as you know, and and we, as a planning commission, I think, need to get direction to do revisions, put back in or modify the master plan, we need authorization to do that from the village council. So with, in that on that topic, I think we need to send a letter asking the village council if they want us to update the master plan again, considering that that park ordinance was changed. And I guess that would be a, a letter to the council asking that. So that's why I have that on there. So if, if you agree, I would entertain a motion to draft a letter to the village council asking if they want us to update the master plan to include some natural resource management items that were taken out of it.
This is Commissioner Nivell. I'm sorry, I'm hearing some funky noises, I'm sorry. Do we have to do a letter?
I don't know.
Can we just, Tanya, do we have to do a letter to council to ask that, to?
I don't think there's any official way to do that, I think it, it might be nice to know that planning commission has a consensus of something they'd like to accomplish.
Okay, because generally, we, we would like vote to recommend it and then the commissioner would recommend it, but so do you want it in a letter form or just a recommendation?
Up to you guys to, I, I don't, I don't think it's, makes a difference legally, and I don't, it makes a difference for procedure, I, I just think it makes a difference in the presentation, that's all, nothing, no difference.
Commissioner McVinci, would you be our chairperson, McVinci, would you be okay if we just made a, made a motion to recommend to council to allow us to proceed with update like that, or would you prefer to put a letter, a letter might be able to put a little longer explanation than just a motion, so what, what would you think?
Actually, I think a letter would be a little nicer way to do it, and as you say, we could explain some background in it, and I'd be happy to write up such a letter and bring it up to you folks at the next meeting, if that is the way we should do it.
Okay, if you want a motion, this is Commissioner Hayden, I make a motion to have the planning commission chairperson draft a letter to village council to recommend that planning commission review the master plan and update portions of the master plan relating to trails.
Do we want anything about the sewers? The, the boat we had, because I know that we took that out too. Because I know you wanted to comment in the master plan about, we did have a vote and the people voted it down, did we want to do trails and sewers?
You mean it used to be in there and that was removed?
That was removed as well. Do you want?
I, I have not got a second yet, so I can, I can just add to it, related to trails and solid waste management, I'll put it that way, because I think that's better than sewers, because it's not just sewers, it's a solid waste management topic, really.
Support.
Can I also add, when the things that were removed were referring to trails and things like picnic areas, boardwalks, creekside viewing areas, and oddly enough, kayak and canoe launch. It was proposed at one of ours, our open houses, and that was in the master plan as well. So it wasn't just trails, but it was really a lot of things having to do with natural resource management of our wildland parks.
Okay, then I can amend my motion to state, review the master plan in relation to parks and recreation items and solid waste management. Would that, would that cover everything you think?
I think so, and Commissioner MacArthur, you had your hand up?
Oh, no, I, I agree with Larry to that extent, but I had just a question. If we're going to make a request like that, do we have to be specific of what we're going to look at the master plan, or didn't, why can't we just say that we're going to review it, which we should be doing anyways, and I don't know, it just seems like I, limiting ourself to just those two subjects, and if we do this study and then find out there's more, then we got to go back with another letter, right? I don't know what's appropriate, and I get that, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I think that's a good thought there. Those are the things we've been focusing on, but there may be other things that were changed that should be put back in or reconsidered anyway.
Because I think at our last meeting, we discussed that we should Because I think at our last meeting, we discussed that we should be, as commissioners, should be start to review that whole plan. To see if there's anything that we, you know, would like to change or, or that nature, so. But if we did that and found something, then we'd be limited, but, and, and, and if that's what needs to be done, that's fine, but. That's all.
So then we would ask the. Village council if, if they want us to examine. The master plan and propose revisions to it as, as it is now. Some of which was changed since the 2018 version of it came out. But I don't know how to word that exactly, but.
I, I would like to ask our interim village manager to provide. Her perspective on how would be the best way to put this to council.
Well, I guess my question was going to be along Bob's thought. I don't want you to be behind in your timeframe. Would it be best to request the. Multiple versions. Of the edits and then you can see at what point you would like to make edits. Or would you like to just request that you would like to edit it and, and then have free rein? Because we obviously have every edit when it came back to planning commission and every edit when it went to. Council each time. So we do have access to that in the office. So just a thought.
Go ahead, Bob.
Do we, do we have to ask councils permission to review the master plan? I, why, why can't we just review it and then when we find. Uh, sections or, or individual items that we, we would like to have revised or whatever, then we can submit to the council. But do we have to, do we have to get permission just to review it? I, I find that surprising.
Actually, that's a good point, Bob. I suppose just for a review, probably not. But if we decided that anything would need to be changed, then we would have to.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
So do you want to review and council says we won't allow any changes or do you want to say, can we entertain changes and then review it?
Say that again?
I said, it's possible you could review and council will say, we are not interested in making any changes. Or you could say, could we entertain changes and then review it? It's up to you what you put first.
Well, my thought was, this is Commissioner McAvin, my thought was that we. Would need some agreement with council to. Spend the time to go and look again at the master plan. I don't know if that's true. But it was changed by council and. Right now, that's the version that is. In existence, that's the version that we are bound to. To abide by. And if we want to change it to a previous version, seems like we have to get council's permission for that, but. I don't know.
And I think it would give you security, spending taxpaying money, that you would have that security, you were given the direction to do that possibly before you spent the time.
That's what I was thinking. It's, it would be nice if we could just do it, but. Since it was changed by council, I don't see that we can just go ahead and change it back or change it further without. Something directing us to do that.
Okay, so I'm going to back up to my motion and I'm just going to make it very plain and simple and say. Motion to have the planning commission chairman draft a recommendation to council for review of the master plan.
Support.
And then, Rick, we can put whatever we want into that and the reasons why and everything. And if you want our input, we can send it to you.
Okay. Second, oh, Melanie, second. Okay, so. Any further discussion on this before we vote on that motion? All right. So Jenna, would you have a roll call vote on the motion?
Paul Shan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. So that passed. Okay, so I'll work on that before our next meeting and send you an example of it. Of a letter asking. So the zoning ordinance update is the next thing on our agenda and. We are. To work with Carlisle Wortman on a zoning update, ordinance update, so. I guess we have to contact them and, and. Well, or we. Would. Probably look at the zoning ordinance as it is and see what. Areas may be, need to be changed and Larry did provide in the past recently and now. And a workshop to do, to work on that very thing. So. I'm certainly interested in going to that workshop, but I don't know if anyone else is.
Yeah, actually, this was something I received from Michigan Association of Planning. And what it is, is they offer workshops and in this case they offer various pre-made workshops. But they also offer a build your own workshop. And I had sent that to Rick previously and asked if this could be on the agenda. Unfortunately, I think it did not get to everyone in their packets. Uh, if you're interested in looking at what that is, I just pasted the link into the chat for this meeting, so it's available both for. Everyone here and also the public if they're interested in seeing that. And what it is, it's a workshop where they have various topics you can pick up, you can pick three topics to choose from. And. They have things in there like, uh, and this I think does relate to the zoning, zoning ordinance update. They have form-based codes as one of the topics you can pick. Uh, they have zoning administration as a topic and then they have other, uh, other interesting topics too. And, you know, we don't have to pick all three around zoning. We could pick a workshop and, and pick another topic that might relate. For example, they have one environmental planning that could relate to some other things that we're working on. So my suggestion was that we review this information on the workshop and. Consider requesting that they put together a workshop for our planning commission to attend. Of three of these topics that we think would best fit the upcoming topics that we would be having this year. And I think that fits in kind of like what Rick brought up earlier is if we know that there's going to be certain. Focus areas this year that the planning commission is going to be working on, we can. Tailor a workshop. That will fit our needs to become better informed and educated about those topics so that we could more effectively deal with them. So I wanted to just share that with everybody and ask, uh, what people thought about doing a workshop like that.
Anybody? Sounds like a good idea, could be very useful for us. Not sure, does that mean we put together a workshop or we, someone puts together for us on these topics?
We would pick the topics that we would want in the workshop. That's why it's called build your own and then they would put together the workshop for us. Based on those topics.
Where would we hold this? Would it be Zoom workshop, you think?
I'm assuming it would be a virtual workshop at this point, yes.
At this point, yep. Well, that sounds good. Very useful.
And you would have to verify that with them that MML, their workshops, they allow one user to purchase it. And then multiple people can watch it. You would have to verify with them how their pricing works. I, I have not used one for a large group.
Yes, I, I, I think that would have to be verified. I would, I would suggest that we. Tanya, is that something that could be investigated? Uh, the pricing model for that before our next planning commission meeting?
I think if, if you don't mind, if Rick would send the three that you're interested in and we can check if we can get. The, everybody in on one price or if we do a bulk price or, you know, so how many people are interested in, in the three that you're interested in?
Because I, I was thinking of, I, I don't know if everybody wants to look through all those right now and, and make a decision. I was thinking that we could. I would share this now and then people could look at it, review it and think about it, since we didn't have time prior to the meeting. And maybe pick the three topics that we want in April at our April meeting and schedule workshop from that point. But if we had the pricing information, then, then we could make a decision, do we want to continue or not, but it's, it's up to you guys how you want to do that. I just thought it would be a, a good idea for us and I just wanted to see what everyone else thought about it.
Well, just keep in mind with those workshops, each of them have different lengths and so I assume there's going to be different pricing based on the three that you choose.
So according to this. Seventy-five dollar member rate, one hundred dollar non-member rates, and I don't know if they have anything for a group rate, if we are all part of one group.
And it said something along the lines of they were half hour to two hours, so each one's different. You may or may not even be able to do it in one evening, depending on the three you pick. So we need the information so we can kind of figure out what that would look like. And, and how much money you have left in your budget for trading, I'm not sure.
Commissioner MacArthur.
Larry, could you, could you email that to me later? I know you put it on that chat line, but that does me no good.
I, I can forward this to. Everybody, that's not a problem. Let me, let me get that right now.
I'd appreciate that.
All right. So beyond that, zoning ordinance update, we. We, we look through the entire zoning ordinance and see if areas we want to change. Commissioner Pausen, go ahead, Lee.
Okay. Where, I don't know if Tanya can tell us, uh, where do we stand as far as Carlisle Wortman? Are we at the point where. They have. Normally have a standard package of the ordinance and we. Review each section of it that way. Are we at that point yet or is this a, a few months away?
What we have done as council is, as they have done, whatever, as council has accepted, um, the proposal from them. And there has been no interaction from that point.
Okay. Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
So then that. Role, does that, I assume that comes to planning commission to work with them and it's up to us to initiate that?
You know what, I don't know the answer to that one. Um, I'll have to review, I reviewed the proposal, but I didn't review that exact direction.
Okay.
So we'll have to look in that. I will verify that for you tomorrow. Um, I know we emailed them that we did accept and it was approved.
Right. All right. Anything further on zoning ordinance, if it can be brief? No?
I would just like to give you a quick feedback. The past two prior managers and so by default me, myself as well, the recommendation was. Um, to do specific ordinances with a not to exceed price. Um, council's pleasure was to do all of the ordinances. Um, it's a fourteen thousand dollar price tag and there is no money set aside in the budget. So that's something that council will then address to figure out where that budget money will come from. I just wanted to make planning commission aware. Of, of the two options that were available. Um, planning commission did not give an option to council. And like I said, that was council's discussion, but I did want that just on record in general.
Okay. Okay, so. Our, our next item is election of officers. So. I guess, go ahead.
According to our bylaws and the rules, can we cast the unanimous vote for. Those positions and, and. Take care of it at that point if, if they're willing to take the positions.
You do you say unanimous or anonymous?
Unanimous.
Okay, couldn't quite tell.
Because I, I got different organizations or a motion can be made to cast. And unanimous. Vote to reappoint specifically your names and, uh, and then have a vote on it. I'm not sure if that's appropriate here. It might be just a little too easy and quick for. For your, for the rules.
Well, I, I don't want to run this election. Because I'm on the. Uh, well, I don't know. I'd like someone else to run the selection who's. Besides myself. And. I guess the first, well. Guess the first part is to ask for nominations. Unless we, yes, let's just do it that way. And, and. Jenna, can you collect nominations? That come up, so. No, I'm not going to run this. Somebody else run this for me. I don't want to ask nominations for.
Well, who's, who's the current secretary?
Well. Commissioner Nivell, you think you can run this? Election?
Um, should I? If, if you're not doing it, should I? Because we're both in a.
You're both in position.
So I would say Larry, Lee or Bob, go for it.
Lee, would you mind running this again, this election again, like you did the last time? Lee Pausen there.
What?
Would you mind running this, this election of officers again this time? Just.
Yeah, I, what we have the chairman, the secretary and the co-chair, am I correct in those?
I think we eliminated co-chair the last.
I think we just have chairman and secretary.
Thank you.
Now. This has to be a roll call, right? Or we, we, I'm, I'm going to ask for nominations. For the chairman. And then I need a second. And then I'm going to ask for any additional people. And somebody second, and at that point. Uh, we can do the total, not, let's say we get two, we'll do. Yes, yes, no, you know, per, we'll call off the people. And whoever has the most votes in, has that either secretary or chairman, correct? Am I right in saying that, Tanya?
Tell me the end one more time, the last sentence before you said, am I right in saying that?
Okay, what we'll do is I'll ask for nominations for chairman. One, two, if we don't get a second, I'll move on. Then I'm going to ask for nominations of secretary. One, and I'll ask for a second and if I don't get a second. Then at that point, we'll do a roll call vote for each one of the people. So if we have two people for chairman. One gets three, the other one gets two or whatever, that's the person that will become. Is that good?
Yes, I just didn't catch the end. I wanted to be sure I was writing.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'd open up the floor for nomination for. Chairman of the Planning Commission for the year two thousand. Twenty-one.
Commissioner Hayden, I nominate Rick McAvinci for position of chairperson.
Do we have a, I'll second that motion, Commissioner Pausen. Okay, we have Rick McAvinci. Do we have any other nominations from the floor?
Um, this is Commissioner McAvin, I'd nominate Commissioner MacArthur.
I can't hear you very well.
I would nominate Miss, Commissioner MacArthur. For chairman.
Do we have?
I'll second that.
I, I couldn't hear what Melanie said.
I'll second it. I know.
Second, Melanie supported it.
Slow down, my hearing aids are dying.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, you, Rick. Uh, requested. uh, requested Bob MacArthur. And then Melanie, you second that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other people that, any nominations? If not, at this point, I'll close the nomination for president.
Jenna.
Excuse me. Chairman. Okay, at this point, Jenna, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay. What we'll do, we'll have a, a roll call vote for Rick McAvinci. And then we'll have a roll call vote for Bob MacArthur, so. We'll go with.
Um, question.
Rick McAvinci.
Lee, question, can we just have a roll call vote and each, um, commissioner states the candidate they vote for instead of a yes, no?
I.
Then we just do one roll call, hopefully.
It doesn't matter to me, Larry, I've suggested one way and then.
Yeah, I'm, we can, we can do it that way, that's okay.
So, all right, so go ahead, Jenna.
Conway.
Who are we asking for?
This is for.
McAvinci.
Okay.
Conway.
I vote, I vote for Rick McAvinci.
Hayden.
Um, well, if this is for Rick, I'd say no, I'm gonna vote for Bob, I think.
MacArthur.
I'll vote for Rick.
Nivell.
I'll vote for Bob.
Pauschan.
I vote for Rick.
McAvinci.
MacArthur.
Oh, so we're in a tie.
Yeah.
Is correct in the proper method of voting?
Well, can we have the village president to be the tiebreaker? Like the vice president?
I don't think I see that in our rules procedure and unfortunately with an evenly split.
Okay.
Yeah, that motion fails. I mean, and we have to do this this evening, can we do it when we have the, a full commission?
We were supposed to do it in January and if not in January, then within sixty days after.
I know, but.
We would be in violation of our bylaws if we don't do it tonight. And I don't think that'd be a good thing.
Well, so if we could break the tie.
Okay, Chair, uh, Commissioner Hayden, I will switch my vote to McAvinci.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I think that resolved our tiebreaker.
Wait a minute.
Just a minute, folks. There's another way to resolve that and I would say, I would withdraw if Bob will go ahead.
Bob, what do you have to say to that?
Can't say it online, so.
Your face.
Well, I have no problem with it if, if, actually if there's that kind of support, I, if Rick really doesn't want it, I, I, he's much more experienced than I am of, of the rules and I get that, so. I guess, I have no issue with it, it's not funny, Melanie.
I know, I'm.
That's not that I don't want it, it's just that I think you'd be good at.
Well, if, if, if you're interested with it, then I'll withdraw and you, you keep it, you're doing a good job with it.
Oh, boy. So now we're at an impasse. Hmm.
I, I will accept it if it, if that's what it takes to, I guess, to get past us.
Oh. Okay.
All right. Now.
We have a lot of confidence in you, Bob.
Were you, did you say something, Larry?
I said, we have a lot of confidence in Bob.
So, Mr. President, is this what we're just doing now, uh, a reasonable and legal way to, to conclude this election for chairman?
I would recommend a vote.
Okay, so maybe redo the vote, um, I think that probably is best.
So you're at a tie, you can now recommend that you would like to revote for MacArthur. And then it's a yes vote.
Well, I already did.
Uh, we're gonna have a revote for, uh, Robert MacArthur for chairman. Uh, yes, well, yes or no vote.
Okay. Hayden?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Pauschan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes.
Don't, don't smile, Rick, it's not funny.
You've accepted.
All right, so now we have left secretary, right? And do we have a motion for secretary? Rick?
I make a motion.
Commissioner Rick McAvinci.
I, I nominate Melanie Nivell.
Do we have a second for Melanie Nivell?
Okay.
I think Bob seconded.
Bob, did you second that?
Uh, no, I think Lee beat me, that's good.
No, I think Lee was asking for a second.
I was asking, Bob.
Okay, yep, I did then.
Okay. Okay, uh, any other nominations from the floor? If not at this time, I will close nomination for secretary. Jenna, can we have a roll walk, roll call vote for Melanie Nivell for secretary, please?
MacArthur?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
Pauschan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Of course. Yes.
Thank you, Jenna. All right, Rick, you gotta take it over, you're still at the helm until the next meeting.
All right. I was wondering about that. Okay, so we add, thank you, Larry, for pointing out the need to elect officers. And unfinished business. We have to, we, we need to have a representative on the streets committee from the planning commission, just one person or more, but at least one. Who, anyone interested in being a streets committee representative?
I, Commissioner Pauschan, I would, uh, be interested in representing the planning commission on the streets committee.
Hi. Anyone else? Okay. Do we need a vote on this or we can just accept your interest? And assign you, I think we just assigned. Anybody know? Do we need?
I think we can have consensus that, uh, the chairperson should recommend to council the nomination of Lee Pauschan for the, uh, to be our liaison on streets committee, I think that would be enough.
I think so. All right. Then that means we need another roll call vote for consensus. Jenna, why don't you do a roll call vote to see if everyone agrees?
Nivell?
Yes.
Pauschan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes. Okay, now the next, thank you very much, Jenna, the next, uh, well, the next need for a, a committee member is the redesign of the heritage garden space. May or may not remain a garden, nobody knows, at least we don't know.
Um, Commissioner Nivell, I would be interested.
Okay. Is there anyone else that's also interested in being on that committee to help redesign that space? Um, anyone? I was interested in it because I helped design it in the first place, but I don't think so. I'll just stay out of it at this point. Okay, so we have Commissioner Nivell interested and, um, let's have a, another roll call vote to, uh, support that or not support it.
Pauschan?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Nivell?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes. Okay, that passed and so I'll recommend both of you to these committees. Thank you very much for stepping up and being ready to get involved with those. The last thing on our unfinished business, I put for stewardship plan, but, um, we actually have, I think we have to wait until next Monday's village council meeting to find out whether we are going to, whether they will approve a forest steward, pursuing a forest stewardship plan for our village, our two wildland village parks, so we may not have anything to really do with that yet. But I did send you, just a minute, Lee, I did send you quite a bit of information on that as far as what goes into a forest stewardship plan and the forms for the outreach and education grant and the forest stewardship plan application through the Michigan DNR forestry division. Just so you're familiar with it, if village council decides to move ahead with a forest management plan, then at least you'll become familiar with it enough, so, or if they don't, you still have the information. So if you have forest property someplace, you can go ahead and get one yourself. So anyway, it's a little premature perhaps, but depending on what they decide Monday, we may be going ahead with that. Any questions about that, I don't, I don't know. What else to say about it?
Lee, did you want to say something?
Lee did, yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a, Rick, now, I, I did not read this thoroughly, but at this point in time, this forestry stewardship plan we put together, uh, and to do that, is there a cost involved in just putting the stewardship plan together? Or is the cost when you get involved in grant funding for the stewardess fund?
Well, so each, each, um, certified plan writer for the DNR forest stewardship program charges whatever they charge, whatever we charge for a forest management plan, um, and so that, there's a cost involved, but also there's an outreach and education grant from the forest stewardship program that pays considerable amount uh, toward the cost of a plan. And it's, it's for schools, municipalities and, um, other organizations like camps that have forest land, so. So the, with a forty-seven acre forest, and even if you add a fifteen acre forest, which I think is what the Naren Park is, the amount that they pay or from the outreach and education grant should more than pay for the cost of having a plan done. And Mike Smolligan is the DNR forester in charge of that whole program and he is so eager. He has all this funding and he wants to use the funding. He's so eager to get people to write forest management plans for municipality parks and such or school district properties that, um, he's just looking for new plans to be written for, for schools and, and towns and townships and, so. So it should not cost the village anything.
Um, trust, trust, oh, shoot, Commissioner Nivell?
Yes, yes, of course.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, I actually talked with that, uh, Mike Smolligan.
Good.
Um, and he has nothing but great things to say about you, by the way. He, he likes you very much, Rick.
Oh.
Um, but he, um, well, there were a couple of things and bear with me with my notes here. Um, he said that the outreach and education grant that is the one that we got the copies of, so the one that you were looking at, he did not think that, um, since we're, uh, it's a municipality owned acreage, um, that we would actually qualify for that one.
That's surprising me.
Yeah, um.
Says so right on the outreach program information.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying my conversation, can I finish?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. So he said that he didn't feel because it was a municipality owned. He said, um, but we talked about the school and that it's on some of it. And he said, the only way you could do that is to, um, um, if the school was in agreement with your plan and you did one single source. But I see that as being messy and another layer of government, actually. Um, and we'd always have to go in front of the school board to, you know, ask down the line if we did any changes. So I don't think that's the good way to go about it. Um, he, he said that, um, he gave us some names of foresters to get some ideas of what it would cost um, to actually get the forest plan um, together, which I was gonna ask you, what do you usually charge? What's your, your range, Rick, for something that's, um, municipality owned and forty-eight acres? Like what's a good range?
Well, let's see. So it would, if I was doing it, it would be somewhere in the range of between nine hundred and a thousand dollars for that amount of property.
Mm-hmm.
I think, anyway, just off topic. That's what it would be. But I'm really surprised that he said that to you because we just did a forest management plan, forest stewardship plan for, um, well, Hawk Woods Nature Center, the one that I sent you, and, and that's a municipal park. And so I don't understand why he told you that, actually.
Um, I, I don't know, but I, um, that's what he, and then he also said the, um, payment. So if we were to hire somebody to do it, um, then we submit that with, you know, per the grant. And then the payment actually goes right to the forester, it doesn't, um, come to, you know, the village, it would go right to the forester, whoever is hired to actually do the plan. Um, and for some of these, like the. Like for that one, outreach and education was a thousand, and then it was 250 an acre, but he's, he said that he. He, he actually said, um, don't apply for that one. I said, well, that's the one that we were given. Um, so maybe you can talk to him and ask him more specifics.
I guess.
For that. And then there was one that's a school forest grant, which is something we can't do because it's just the school, and that's 1,400 plus 250 an acre. Um, one that he said that we could possibly do would be, um, $250 is what they would refund us and 50 cents an acre.
Yeah, that's the standard.
Yeah.
Amount that they put in for when anybody wants a forest management plan.
Yeah. And he said, and that directly paid to the forester, but he said the, the onus is on the village to. Hire somebody and pay them to have that done. Um, and he said that if you wanted just a bare bones one, just. You know. You could always have that done and not go through a grant system because. Um, you know, at, at times, and as Lee, Lee knows with the concession stand, grants can really restrain you. They can put your hands on things, so. Sometimes it's not always the best way to. Um, go through a grant. Uh, but it's something to. Talk about.
Certainly is.
That's it.
Alright, anybody else have anything on the forest management plan idea? Otherwise, we can. Anyone? Okay, so. Uh, we'll have to, I'm gonna have to talk with Mike and see what that's all about. But, um, so. Discussion items, um, Commissioner Conway. Have anything you want to put in?
Uh, no, sir, just that I gotta go walk that, the property there, uh, maybe this weekend if the weather's, weather allows.
Mm-hmm, okay. Good idea. Um. Commissioner MacArthur?
No, I have nothing other than thank you, I guess. I hope you haven't made a mistake. But thank you for your, your support and thoughts on that. Appreciate it, I guess.
Commissioner Pauschan?
Bob, congratulations to you. As chairperson. Rick, I'd like to. Uh, thank you very much for all the time that you've been our chairperson.
Just over a year. Well, thank you very much.
Alright. That's all from Commissioner Pauschan.
Okay, Commissioner Nyval?
Same, thank you, Rick, for, for the, all the hard work for the last year. And Bob, I'm sure Rick will help you with anything you have questions on. I know he will. And thank you very much, um, for voting me in as secretary again. I appreciate it.
Ah, Commissioner Hayden?
I just want to thank everybody on the planning commission for, uh, being part of planning mission and contributing to our community and their dedication and passion for it. I, I really appreciate working with everybody on here.
And, and thank you. Commissioner. Wilson has taken my advice, not hurried her way through her visit with her father-in-law, so she's not here now, and. I'm glad. They haven't seen each other for a year.
Yeah.
So. Okay, well, thank you all very much, and, um. I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hayden, motion to adjourn.
Commissioner MacArthur, support?
Roll call vote, Jenna?
Conway?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
MacArthur?
Yes.
Nyval?
Yes.
Pauschan?
Yes.
McAvinci?
Yes, thank you all. Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.